I will begin by calling the board for the planning board.
Here.
Just a line.
Yeah.
Dr. Koo.
Here.
Stephanie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Yeah.
Richard Jager.
Here.
Don Walters is absent tonight. So on our agenda, as you can see on the screen, we actually only have one major item on the agenda tonight. We have the continued public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment for short-term rentals. There's just general business after that. So the only, the majority of the time tonight will be spent on that. And the way I would like to do this is to open it up first to public comment. And then the board can decide at that point, after all the public comment is done, whether it wishes to close the public hearing and move on to deliberations. After however we do that, I would then want to ask the board members individually to speak to their opinions on the proposed ordinance and any issues that they see and would like to have addressed. And once we've gone through a round of that, I will try to go through the entire ordinance. Item by item, see if we can get to a point where we can make a recommendation to the city council. Any questions from the board about that? That's a good plan. Okay, then in that case, I will open up the meeting for public comment. And again, if you can come to the podium, speak into the microphone, give your name and address, and please let me get comments to two minutes. And please step up.
Well, Stephanie Nikotich, 93 High Street. First, a correction and second, a question. So the correction is, I sent you a letter and in it I suggested that you would be, that there would be some new parking ordinances before you. And then I realized they're under chapter 13, so they're part of a general ordinance, so I don't think they will. But given the careful look that you gave the ITIF zoning proposal, there are ordinances you might be interested in, even if you're not going to hear them. The question I have, and I, you know, I made in my letter, I made a think enough statements. But the question is, and I've had this question for every ordinance that's been drafted, is why is, why do we not tie bedrooms to occupancy? So you can go today on the Airbnb or Burbow and there's, you can see homes in Newburyport, but there's one on Kent Street where it's one bedroom and they're renting to four or five people. And I don't think that's the intention of saying you can have up to three bedrooms, up to six people, or up to one bedroom, up to two people. Do we really mean you can have one bedroom and six people? I mean, that just, it doesn't make sense to me. So I was wondering why it's written that way? And if the reason is that we can't limit occupancy for bedrooms, seems to me we could. But it seems like that would be a good thing to do in these ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'm sure you know this, but this is not our proposed ordinance to us. It's a good point.
Right, but you get to ask questions, you might get answers.
I understand. Okay, somebody else.
Mary Creachey, also known as Kitty, 232 High Street. Considering the weather and under what circumstances we will allow strews in our community, we need to address the issue holistically. We cannot separate the zoning decision, which is before us, from the issues of licensing and enforcement. To do otherwise is like accepting a job offer without knowing the job description or the salary or the other benefits. And I ask that you not close this public hearing if that's going to start the 90-day clock. I think we need more time to get public involved in this. Furthermore, I don't think we should even consider allowing strews unless we have the resources and commitment from the city to manage them. So far, they haven't done a very good job of enforcing our regulations now. I don't know why that would change. And I think licensing fees should be high enough to cover the cost of enforcement like parking does. There can be good reasons to want strews. However, there's no reason to let them operate in such a way as to disturb our neighborhoods and disrupt the fabric of our community. First and foremost, I do not think we should allow investor-owned units within our residential zones, including R3. Second, we limit the concentration of strews in any one street or neighborhood to both protect the social fabric of our community and to reduce the stress on already scarce parking. Third, I think we should establish and enforce regulations designed to maintain our quality of life. These can be such measures as restricting types of activities, hours of operation for some activities, and establishing parking protections for our permanent residents. Fourth, I think we require onsite presence of either the owner or their qualified registered agent, who is required to familiarize their guests with the rules of neighborhood code of conduct and is available 24/7 to address complaints promptly and effectively. ... regulations by imposing meaningful fines and revoking licenses for repeat offenders. We need to make sure we've gotten sufficient incentives for the strews to self-regulate if we want this to work. Also, I think we need to build contingency plans. We start with a pilot program in which any new stru is only allowed to start operating for one year. And after that one year, if they haven't had any issues, then we can renew. Local governments have an obligation to safeguard and protect the interests of their residents. Do this right, protect our neighborhoods and our housing stock by keeping it small, local, and well-managed so that we can welcome strews rather than resent them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rita Mahalik, 53 Warren Street. I didn't prepare anything, so do my best off the top of my head. But the last meeting I was at for strews, I came out of it and I said, just everything Kitty said, it's incomplete. I mean, it was well-intentioned, but there's nothing we could really grasp to think that this was going to be anything of benefit to the residents in our communities and to enhance it. So I thought, it's incomplete what you're doing unless you get those other parts of the puzzle, the enforcement, the verifications, and how it's going to run. So you keep giving us ordinances without giving us the operation. And I don't even know if there's a study done to show whether the cost of doing all this is going to be offset by what everybody's so excited about, the taxes and all the money we're going to get from it. I think that's a myth myself, but I don't know. So my thought was, why don't you do it in two phases? You need to get something in on Plum Island. So a technical Plum Island is phase one. Write the ordinances. Get all the puzzle. Get how you're going to enforce it, how you're going to collect, how you're going to register, how you're going to do everything. Get the complete pie. Show it to us. Get it working. Then come in and consider the mainland and then build that in. Then until you have that, ban it in the mainland. Because I really think you need to put your thinking hat on again and say, how can we merge? How can we have this conviction and the intention to have affordable housing and not kick it down, kick that can down the street again by opening up STRUs in such an absurd free economy that it's just going to kill us? So we need, put it in Plum Island. They want it, they need it. Get it working there. And then do the mainland and have it pretty darn strict in my book so that it's what Kitty said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent Swanton, Kent Tremont Street. I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I spoke last time. At the risk of repeating myself, whatever the issues are with STRUs, we have a lot of them in the city. And I think it's good for the city to have an ordinance about them because they exist. And it's, I think it's good to have an ordinance. And at the risk of repeating myself, I just want to indicate that we discussed it at the Zoning Board of Appeals. In this proposed ordinance, we're asked to rule on, with a special permit, on whether STRUs in the residential district in the R3, to be specific. And it's hard for some of us to imagine how, given our criteria that is given to us in this proposed ordinance, would be, is this STRU more detrimental to the neighborhood than not an STRU? Many of us are like, well, of course, it's going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I think it's unlikely, if this passes the way it's written, that you'll see a lot of STRUs in the residential district if you're leaving out those to the side. I think I made that point last time, but just to be absolutely clear. But I do think we need something because they exist. Go to BBRO, go anywhere. They're all over the place and it's kind of a festering thing and something needs to be sorted out. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
I agree with him.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the board at this point. How do you feel, what happens about, whether you want to keep the public hearing open or close it? The difference is, obviously, is the, you know, we're not going to come up with a new ordinance because we're already in a common, the ordinances were referred to us by the city council. But the difference is, from that point of view of closing that closed, is when the 90-day period starts within which the city council has to act. So if we were to close the public hearing tonight, the city council would have to act by August 3rd. If we waited another two weeks, another two weeks, the city council would have to act. Any thoughts about how to proceed at this point before getting into a discussion of merit of the ordinance?
From my point of view, I don't think we're going to, I'm not sure we're going to have any change of opinion over the course of two weeks based on the feedback we've given and based on our review. So I'm not sure that open the call would benefit us.
So if we close it, then what does that turn out exactly? The city council would need to...
If we close the public hearing, the city council needs to act within 90 days.
So they would need to vote on...
On one way or on something, on some aspect of the ordinance before us for the 90 days.
Are they, do we want to put pressure on the city council by closing the public hearing or do they...
At some point, we have to close the public hearing.
Right, what I mean.
So I guess the question is, do we do it this week? Do we do it two weeks? Do we do it the first week in June? It's really just a question of when we do it. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just want to get a sense of how the board feels about, again, getting the public comment. And I'll take a motion either to close the public hearing or to continue.
Okay, so just for clarification.
Could you turn up the volume? It's very hard to hear.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right, so if we close public hearing and that 90-day clock starts, it means that in city council even, like no revisions can be made? It has to be this draft as is or no?
No. If we close the public hearing, the city council can do whatever it wants with this ordinance as long as they stick to the basic, the general approach of the ordinance. If they came up with a totally newer, then it's like we have to come back to it and we have to care for this.
And is there sort of like a scale of so many changes made that it comes back to us? Like, or is it sort of like trust?
I don't know. I can leave that to him.
I'll just say that there's no obligation to come back to the White Board, like Rick said, unless there's some sort of something, some deviation of the subject matter or it turned out to be advertised again, back to the proposal. Then the intention is really that the White Board is able to provide a recommendation for whatever proposal was brought forward. They can be negotiated, so it's like, whether it makes sense to have different revised versions or iterations going back and forth. I think I covered the last meeting, just because we had already seen two-year process and not actually, yeah. The ordinances, I think we've seen the range of issues. Some of us who have been here have seen four-range of issues, neighbor issues, and what it can be addressed. I'm not necessarily, it's more time, you know, would benefit us. I think we need to get recommendations. But it's up to the board here, I think, really up to what time you need to get any further inputs, whether it's revised, comments. My position is, I feel like we've heard all those comments in areas of interest and concern and now we need to be weighted in some way, but the White Board, the city council. But we've also already just wanted over the record to, just for your consideration, it's not necessarily, you know, for you, but the sponsor could ask for feedback as soon as you're able to do that. Possibly closing out tonight and be able to provide a recommendation. Whether you're able to provide a recommendation tonight has also been, you know, certain senses. We had, I think it was Councilor Polly, we worked in the last, last meeting. We had, he had known the fact, I think, that the point, you know, cycle and because they still want to use there. I think he had a preference for the White Board to continue more time, at least to make sure that they are, I think, given as much of that 90 days as possible to work with. Such that I think the intent there might be that if we close the public hearing, hopefully, we're able to issue a recommendation out of that same night or sooner after, so that the council has really as much of that 90 days as possible to work with, given that they might have their own, maybe.
So again, let's go a little bit deeper into detail, just to know. So there's some certain points to this that are detailed, that, like hot topics, let's say 120 days, parking, things like that. Those types of things, could those change and city council not come back?
That's correct. Generally speaking, there is, I mean, there is case law essentially on how, you know, where that might have crossed. But generally speaking, yes, all these different parameters can be adjusted one way or another. 120 days, 90 days, et cetera, things like that. As long as it's about a substance that we give entirely different, closer to topic for the whole year, that would really have to be something to come back and certainly reflect something like that. But they would have a lot of latitude to change it.
Okay.
Regardless of whether or not all your recommendations are included or not, it could be changed.
And I would say the point of this process, this is, this again is Councilor Zee's proposal. And the point of this process is for us to make recommendations about that. So we could make a, you know, assuming, assuming we close the hearing tonight and voted tonight, we could make a, we could make a recommendation if that were, I'm not saying that's sets the board, but for example, we could make a recommendation to reduce the 120 days to 30 days. And then that recommendation would go to the city council. The city council does not have to follow that recommendation. And even if we didn't make that recommendation, it could do that up the road. So it's, state law just requires us to review the proposed ordinance and to make a report with recommendations to the city council and then, you know, after we've closed the public hearing. So if we, if we close the public hearing tonight, we might be able to get to a vote tonight. I don't know. If we put it off, we might be able to get to a vote on the, on the next meeting, the 17th or whatever it is. So we can't actually make that recommendation until we're closed. So I guess, I guess my question is, how close do you feel as a board? You know, we don't know at this point. Do you feel like we're getting close to a point of having enough information to make a recommendation? Or do you think we still need to be talking about it for one or two more meetings?
I guess I think that this all feels very preliminary to me. I don't feel like there's been very much discussion at all about this in this context or with the public. There are a lot of pieces, as, you know, some of the comments reflect tonight, that haven't been talked about at all, particularly enforcement. So I think there's a lot more to be discussed and a lot more to the recommendations that we've meant to the council that could be far more comprehensive if we had a little bit more time to really talk about. So I just, I don't think we're ready to make a recommendation based on how much time we've put in by this so well.
Okay, that's, I think, a different question as to whether we need to keep the public hearing open. That's about our discussion, as opposed to public hearing. But if you feel like we need to keep the public hearing open...
I think along with that, keep the public hearing in order to solicit it.
So, so in conclusion of this meeting, that's the, that's the sense of the board. It's anybody with strong opinions. To the contrary, we will continue to, we will have our discussion tonight for as long as we can and then continue the public hearing to the next people. I do want to think, I do think we have enough information tonight to have a very thorough discussion. So I don't think this is going to be a short, this is going to be a long meeting, unless I'm surprised. So I guess with that, then, we'll just move on from that. And I would just ask each of you to kind of give me a, give me and the rest of the board a summary of where you stand at this point, what the key issues that you think are. And then I would like to go through item by item in the ordinance to get to each of these points. You know, try to, try to cover everything. And if we, if there are major issues that, that we have disagreement on, we will just put it off for a couple more weeks. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay, great. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking over my shoulder, Richard. All right, do you have any comments on that discussion, Richard?
Nope, it all sounds good.
So I'll just open it up for each of the members to just kind of highlight where they think this ordinance is at this point and what they see are the key issues that, but, you know, A is the ordinance at all going in the right direction. And then B, if it's generally going in the right direction, what are some of the major issues within? Whoever wishes to go first, move to first.
Okay, so from my point of view, I do think we need an ordinance in place just because of, like some of the comments earlier tonight, there are lots of them here. They are technically illegal in the city, given, given the current zoning ordinances. So I think we do need to address that and have an ordinance. And so I think, I think we do need some regulation in place. This proposed ordinance, in my view, is, I guess it's a pretty fair compromise between some of the earlier versions that we've seen. I think it's, I think it is trying to balance some of the different issues. I'm not sure that they've been completely balanced yet, but I think that's, that is the attempt. And so I think it's a good, a good attempt at that. In my mind, I do see really three main issues. And that's first, where, which zones they're allowed in. Number two, the parking requirements associated with them. And number three is the enforcement aspect of it. So just, just to further elaborate on those, my, my view with looking at the owner-occupied STRUs, if those are allowed in the R1, R2, and R3 zones. I raised the point before where I thought that was unfair to some of the other homeowners in the agricultural conservation areas or even the WND, WMU regions. My concern there is treating the citizens of the city fairly, where you're giving rights to certain ones and not others. For example, if, if it's left as is, there'd be houses on Warner Street where they'd be allowed on one side of the street and not on the other side of the street. And I think that's unfair. My recommendation for that is for them to adjust the zones, not necessarily to allow it in the conservation areas. But they don't seem to be interested in adjusting the zones to be fair. So I'm concerned about that. Secondly, with the parking requirements, I guess I can support the parking requirements that are, that are stated here. Yeah, that's a tough balancing one. I think that's a big issue. I was disappointed that we didn't hear more about that from the city councils at the last meeting because they're the ones that get the feedback from the residents as far as parking. I don't, I don't get that, so I'm not really sure where that stands. But I do know that we have heard comments from the residents at the hearing about that. So that is a concern. I think, again, the city needs to address some of those issues. For example, allowing overnight parking in the city lots in order to alleviate some of that problem. I haven't seen any discussion or movement on that. Again, so that's a concern, just the whole, whole parking situation. And then third, on enforcement, I think there definitely needs to be enforcement of the, of the ordinance. I do have concerns about that. I agree with Kitty that the city hasn't shown very much progress in enforcing the other ordinances. I'm not sure how strong they will be enforcing this one. So my view is, if there's not going to be enforcement, we probably shouldn't bother having an ordinance. So I am concerned about enforcement, but again, that's up to the executive branch. And unless we can get the mayor here to give us information about how they're going to enforce it, I'm not sure where we, where we stand on that, or how we, but I am concerned about having enforcement. Those are the main issues I see.
Thank you.
Just bringing us up to the next, I've actually been kind of in the middle of this one all along. I came in, I joined the board when the last one was, was supposedly kind of the finish line, but it didn't happen. I didn't express a lot of opinions in because I think I, I never felt that there was going to be a perfect ordinance here. I do feel like, to the extent we have STRUs, a lot of us use them and become critical, we say we should ban them altogether. Certainly, they need to be regulated and everyone, I think, agrees, there needs to be some moderation. I like the aspiration that someone from the public said about maybe increase the way we actually welcome them. That might be a little ambitious, but that would be, that'd be great. So I, I think there should be some moderation here. But I do have, I think, I guess, a top three or four issues list that'd be good to get out. I, first of all, the reason I would also support continuing the hearings, I, even Councilor Zee, as much as I admired him for tackling this and simplifying it and trying to find a middle-of-the-road solution, he acknowledges that, you know, there's a companion piece here, which is the licensing. And I don't, I know that's not our purview on the planning board, but there's so much intertwined. It's hard to think of this in isolation. So I mean, I was thinking about continuing on the basis of asking more questions about the licensing. But I just think we need to know more about that. Can fees offset the cost of enforcement? How's that going to work? My second biggest concern, and they're all kind of related, so they kind of circle back on each other. My biggest concern about strews generally is the, is how they displace, you know, affordable housing and rental stock in the city. And I think that's an important type of housing that we need. You know, I think everyone can, to the extent there are carve-outs for homeowners to do it for a small period of time, that's great. But to the extent we could have, you know, large quantities in the city, I think there's, there's got to be a limit. So circling back to the licensing, I'm thinking, well, it would be very difficult to put a cap on how many of these we have from zoning, but perhaps it could be done in licensing. So there again, I'm coming back to, I think, the licensing question. And then as it gets to some of the more technical questions, in parking in particular, I'm glad colleague Mr. Clark mentioned that, you know, to the extent that we're not allowed overnight parking in this lot, we still have other kind of technical issues kind of ahead of this in terms of some technical matters. So I think there's a lot more that we need to know about this. I don't think, it could actually, the final product could actually be very simple and equally simple, but there's still so much more questions to be asked and answered, I think, before, you know, we can, we can just send this off to start the 90-day clock. But I do think we also could ask a lot of good questions tonight and give a lot of really good feedback to the council as they continue to work on, in particular, with licensing. And just to refresh my memory, maybe someone else will remember, I don't think they were planning to tackle licensing until after they got to this. But I don't know if anyone else happens to remember what was said about that.
My understanding, we hadn't talked about it the last couple of years. And generally speaking, the council had decided to put licensing off until this was addressed because I think the zoning, let's say the zoning is a little bit more complicated, what caused the, what's the reason for that? So the sponsor, I think, had an incentive to break for the license, these are work on that afterwards. I think these are, that work, but as you noted, you have necessarily seen, you know, that. You could, and as, because there's a license, it doesn't necessarily be comfortable for this board, uh, although you may allow that to be a little important. They want to provide specific recommendations of things you think are important in there, so again, the force decided, we talked about. You know, the staffing, you know, assistance that would be needed, uh, to administer that in the license commission side, the funding, you know, side. Based on the property process for it and, you know, of course, the aspect of it, you know, it's, uh, it's been pointed out before that the administration of the council will, you know, the council side of that enforcement. But, um, but yeah, I think the sponsor is currently working on this, they currently have, they don't have any word of that. In maybe it's the same word as since we saw, you know, last year.
So Andy, I guess, uh, let's follow it up a minute. Two things, one, uh. The sponsors bringing this forward as a zoning at first, licensing afterwards, but one would expect that the city council would take them together, the city council would act on, so. Without the license, is that your impression or?
Yes, I mean, technically, I guess it is possible that for some of the, effective day, we're having a license, so it might not be difficult in the context here to do so without knowing that the council, you know. Ultimately speaking, the council itself is comfortable with parameters of both, um, and up to the head, so it doesn't make sense. I understand exactly what the zoning is addressed for, that does make a lot of sense. Um, it's a primary area of, you know, land use regulation here in this context for this, but, um, the licensing used to be too, uh, I do think it's necessary for that. Reach consensus and address related issues that we've all talked about in both of those, or on both sides of this.
I, I have, I'm not sure what your attention, Jay, just, just follow up, I, I'm not sure that I want to make this more complicated, but trying to get any areas that are, under our jurisdiction, like license. We've got ones, six reviews, I can find those, yeah, make a recommendation on. And as you say, we could put into that, things that we think should be addressed in licensing, but. I don't, I don't think it's, it's helpful for us to try to grab more jurisdiction in, you know, here and, uh, to go after something that's really something that wants its job. So I guess, I guess I. I thought as we could talk about what needs to be in licensing, but I don't think we want to put this off until it's discussed. So did you have anything else, Jay, or no sir?
Also.
Uh, first of all, I want to say that I do think an ordinance is important, um, so I am for an ordinance to be had. One of the points, the hundred and twenty days, I think is too lengthy, because I think it creates too much of a gray area within this ordinance. And I think it sort of engages some of the other points of, of keeping a sense of control, um, on time periods and whatnot. Um, and I think that that's an area where things could just sway and, and become challenging, even with a direct ordinance. With parking, um, I'm happy with what's here, but I also, I. I don't think that S T R U's or not having S T R U's would actually change the parking report at all. Because I see firsthand long-term residents who, um, you know, park on the street. You can't control that somebody has teenage kids and all of a sudden this family has four cars, three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. So I don't think that with or without S T R U's, parking in your report is going to change in, in any significant way. I, I, I have a hard time with people going into this ordinance hoping to see. S T R U's shut down because they're, they're not qualified with the hopes of affordable housing coming on the market. The word affordable and the word housing in your report really can't be put side by side. Your report is not an affordable city, it's not going to become an affordable city, where we're selling properties at seven fifty and a thousand dollars a square foot. These properties will go on the market very high and they will be sold at a very high rate and the people in the population. That some people are hopeful would be allowed to have housing. It won't happen, it's, it's going to be a, a more expensive apartment than people would imagine. So yes, there would be more inventory, but I don't see it as being quote unquote affordable, because those owners are going to do the best they can in the marketplace. And one comment I have that has just not felt good to me, it's not directly in this ordinance, but I asked it two weeks ago. The fact that there's no ordinance in place and the fact that therefore these are all illegal, I can understand that concept. But what does not feel good to me is that for however many years, funds have gone through the websites to the state and back to the city. And are lying on it in the budget, because what that tells me is we're putting money into our city that's illegal. And that concept does not feel good to me, so every time I hear the word illegal and I know that funds are being spent, to me, there's, there's a problem in my mind and it doesn't clear up very easily. So I might just want to get that out there, because it's, it, it's confusing to me, it's very confusing.
I'll go ahead. So, I think that this proposal is helpful and so, in many ways, a good compromise. I agree that, I think it feels like parking in a way that is fairly manageable. I agree that the. Owner occupied, um, that a hundred and twenty days may be longer than really is necessary, I know. You know, people have expressed some concern. So I think bringing it down to something like ninety days, um, might be more reasonable, but I, I do think that. Those situations should be allowed, I know there was talk in the last meeting. Um, you know, people saying that there needed to be someone on site, I don't agree with that. I have. Used, um, short-term rental units a lot when traveling and. I don't, I wouldn't use them if someone, if I was sharing a space with someone that. It's purpose to me, um, of the short-term rental unit, so. You know, the proposals that somebody needed, owner needed to be there, I don't think it's necessary, I think in the licensing, there should be something. You know, that somebody's available twenty-four hours, um, and can respond within an hour. Uh, I think that protects the residents, you know, along a lot of other things that should be in licensing, uh, in terms of enforcement. I do have some concerns about the investor, um, own the properties. You know, I had expressed my concern last time about the people that are. Currently have invested properties that are being used to short-term rental units and haven't had any issues. I just, you know, I know, yes, they're not legal, these people have set themselves up on something. And should have known the law, but at the same time, I feel like they do provide short-term rental units benefit to the city. So I would still. Allow those, um. Units that have been in, that have been operating to continue operating under some sort of special permit, um, for some period of time. And but I do think that opening of the R three to investor. Units without, um, some sort of limit, likely to. A, the zoning board having a hard time, um, on the special permit criteria of proving them. Or B, there being too many, um, so I do think there needs to be some sort of, um. Need of a special permit criteria and see if we can. Add something, add some criteria that, um, would allow some of them to operate, but perhaps some limited number.
Um, yeah. I'm. I think, first of all, and, and, you know, I've kind of felt this way over the last year and a half as I have participated in these discussions. There's always this, um. Sense of inevitability of all of this, that we, we have to pass this, because there are pressures in the market that require that we pass something. And I. I think. We do need to pass something, I'd say short-term rental units are a reality. To me, it's a matter of scale and a matter of, of regulation. And, and I would also argue and put forth that, you know, to, to some of the points that were made in the public comment. You can't, you can't really go back, once, once you have passed an order. Uh, we, we are essentially grandfathering it under those guidelines. Every, every short-term rental unit that, that gets a license in that context. So if, if two years from now we determine that the parking is, is problematic, or we determine that a hundred and twenty days is problematic. The way I understand it, everyone is grandfathered in and, and they have all the rights. So I would argue very strongly for a, a kind of careful incremental approval of this. Uh, I, I wouldn't disagree at all with the idea that, that we start with Plum Island. And, and expand from there, because I, I think we have to be very careful about the impacts on, on the city generally and the neighborhoods. I would also argue very strongly that, um. Without some very clear funded strategy, staffed and funded strategy for enforcement. This, this is a free role. And it, it just becomes an uncontrolled part, so I, I don't agree that we should pass. A zoning amendment without understanding very clearly what the structure of enforcement. I think that's fifty percent of the discussion and it really hasn't been talked about at all yet. So I think that, that's part of the reason why I think we're moving a little too quickly on this right now, we haven't talked about deliver after. So just, just talking about a couple of details, um, relative to the hundred and twenty days. I, I think what's happened here is in combining, um. Home share, limited share, owner-adjacent units that, that are technically owner-occupied units per the, the previous amendment proposal. In that previous proposal, there, there was, uh. I can't remember if it was thirty days or sixty days or ninety days, but there was an allowance. For someone who owned a single family house, who wanted to rent that house. It was an allowance for them to, to do that for a certain number of days during the year. And, you know, I believe it started out as thirty, it has grown down to a hundred and twenty, but it had to do with just that unit. You know, with an owner who couldn't be present because they were renting their house, they were going somewhere else. So there was a limitation of time put on that particular rental, so it didn't become, in essence, a kind of investment unit where the owner was never present. All of the other units, the limited share, the owner-adjacent units where the owner could be present. The language in the previous amendment required that for an appointed representative to be present in one of the unit. And, and when you apply that a hundred and twenty days broadly to all of those unit types. You, you've created a situation where owners are not present, uh, very much at all for any of those unit types. And I think that's fundamentally different than where we have been on this over the past year and a half. And I, I would not support that broad, um, you know, allowance of, of time away. For all of the different unit types, I think there could be language added to this that says a hundred and twenty days only applies to single-family houses that are under, like, how many, how many ones. So I, I think that's to me a fundamental problem, uh, that, that results from combining all of those, those unit types. So in, in terms of parking, and, you know, we can, we can go around and around parking. To me, there's, there's a function to the parking requirement that I think is very important. Because there, there is no language, and hasn't been any language in any of these proposals that limits the number of short-term rental units that would be allowed in the city. And the parking requirement is, is a mechanism to, to regulate the number of units, because it, it. It limits the number of units that, uh, that can meet that parking requirement. So I think it's important to say that there is a parking requirement. I still would advocate for a minimum of, of one off-street parking space for, for any short-term rental. Because I think it's important that, that we regulate the number of units that, that are allowed in the city. I think if you say, as, as Councilor Z said in our last meeting, you know, the first parking space is free. I think what's going to happen is all of a sudden, everybody's going to have a one-bed unit and they won't need to provide parking. So I, I just think that, that there's a function to the parking component of this that, that helps with the overall regulation. And, and I, I would argue that, that we need to really pay attention to that as the only way that we can regulate the, the problem of units that are licensed. The last thing I'll say is that in, in the approvals process, there has to be an opportunity for neighborhood input. I think we, we can talk about that, there's, you know. Discussion about special permits, there's discussion about, you know, all of that can happen in a licensing process. I, I think it's enormously important that neighbors have a say in this process and they have the opportunity to. To voice their opinion about it, it's, it's everybody's neighborhood. And, and I think neighbors have a right to, uh, participate in that process, so I would hate to see. A licensing process, which is a kind of check-the-box process, you get your license. And you only get your license taken away if, if the neighbors are complaining. And because that puts the onus on the neighbors again to, to police the situation, which I don't think anybody really wants to do. So it, I, I think there's a lot of this that hasn't been talked about at all yet. Uh, and I think it's all fundamental to, to passing a zoning amendment that. The licensing, the enforcement, the neighborhood input, all of those things that, that, that really are the other half of the equation, really need to be clearly spelled out.
Richard.
Honestly, you all have actually summed up pretty much anything that I would add to this comment, so I would only be repeating what everyone else has already mentioned. I do think the priority is Plum Island and we need to be addressing that.
Thank you. Just add a couple of things, um. You know, I think that from the point of view of zoning, we don't, this, this would be the only time we've ever looked at zoning, to my knowledge. Looked at zoning from the point of view of, uh, enforcement and license, we don't. If we were to look at whether a site could be zoned for a gas station or for a retail store or a restaurant. We wouldn't be, uh, don't typically, I don't, I don't know if we ever looked at licensing as a condition, say. We, we're not going to look at that until we, uh, until we address the non-subjectives, so. I feel that our job is to decide where these things are, um, appropriate to be placed. And, um, what kind of approval we need, if you're going to, I was pointing about. It's going to be, if we're ready to have to have, uh, neighborhood, if we want neighborhood, don't, don't mean to say we're going to have that. If you want to have neighborhood input, that turns it from a priority into a special permit. There's no way you can do a little round there, I don't think. So, um. So the, uh, so my feeling is, uh, you know, in the minority, my feeling is that. All I would like to know what the license is, is resident, um, I don't think it's my purview, it's a planning board average, that's, that's part of this process. I don't think it's my purview, it's a planning board average, that's, that's part of this process. Uh, so, so I think I am in the minority of that. I don't, the other, the thing I don't know, one thing I don't know about this, I don't think we have any information at this point as to how many units are going to be affected, in what way by this, we don't know how many units, to my knowledge, can or can't meet the parking requirements. We don't know how many, to my knowledge, industrial units there are in the residential districts where this ordinance proposes to prohibit. And, now I don't have a real sense of, of whether, how many, whether, will this, will this ordinance prevent any more units that we don't have right now, whether, whether because there are many more houses in this, this area that could qualify that aren't, don't have the needed. So I guess I have a concern that you don't have the information that will let us make an informed decision at this point. And then my third, my third, which is really very young. A hundred and twenty days. Uh, I, I feel that's uh, far out of line in terms of what we're talking about as an owner-occupied. As an absentee, as an absentee owner-occupied, that's what we're really talking about, saying, it's an owner-occupied unit, but you're not a given absentee owner for a third of the year and that seems uh, to be something that's leading and changing the direction. So uh, I guess I'm, I'm in a different position with several of you. But I think we should just, you know, unless, unless you have any further thoughts at this point, I think we should just start going through the ordinance. Going section by section. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say before we get into a discussion?
I just have a question maybe for Andy. Um, long-term rentals, is there any place in the city that is not, that is not allowed? Is there zoning that says long-term rentals cannot be in any section of the city?
No.
And is there any um, policing on driveways and things like that? Like, like parking spaces per driveway or?
Per, per, that's a parking space.
No, like can a, can a two-bedroom condo rented out is to somebody who has three, three cars and is parking on the street?
Oh, well.
Is that monitored in any way?
I, I, we may have once, I have been here at some situation like that, where there's, uh, if someone has an extra space available or you're saying, makes available to someone else to compensate off without street parking.
No, I'm saying, like if I have an apartment that I want to put out there for lease, as a two-bedroom apartment, is there any, there's nobody watching whether I rent to somebody who happens to have four vehicles and I have two parking spaces?
Yes, that, uh, for instance, not tracking number of vehicles, we don't have anything right now that is tracking that. We had uh, tracking individual details like that, once, when on every short-term rental, other, you know, cars.
Long-term rental.
Long-term rentals, short-term rentals, difficult for us to do because we don't have twenty-four hours to have, you know.
Right. Right.
I think, I think the point, maybe the point that I was trying to make is we require for a single-family home to stay two parking spaces, something like that. The person who owns that home, lives there, may have one car, they may have five cars. So we don't, you know, we, we don't, we only, we, we set our regulations based on what we determine to be a reasonable average in terms of car ownership and it probably works out over time. There are certainly places where, you know, somebody is living in a home with two adult children or four cars. They may not, two of the cars may be parked on the street. So I think that's your point, is that?
Well, and my point is that, let's say, some of us think that a high percentage of these STRUs might get shut down due to the restrictions of the ordinance. And if these absentee investors so choose, they can become long-term renters, rental units, which then are gonna have no ordinance per se. And so just, you know, keeping in front of mind, a parking solution may not be had by shutting down short-term rental units because if those become long-term tenants, there's nobody policing the parking issue.
Uh, sorry, just, just to clarify, I didn't, Jennifer is only going to be on chat this, well, but there, uh, keep in mind that there are limitations on which type of use, paid out of property. So whether it's a single-family, for instance, like, you know, you necessarily have a second.
Jennifer Monche, let me give you a sooner. I think the, the shortest answer I can give is that although under zoning for a single-family residence, we require two spaces, zoning has no ability to limit the number of cars, if registered, that an individual family owns. They could have six vehicles, eight vehicles, and zero parking spaces. All of those cars, whether it's a rental or homeowner, can end up on the street. I think that's the point you're making. So that problem exists, whether it's a short-term rental or not.
So it won't be monitored if a fair percentage of these become long-term rentals. Zoning does not have the ability to monitor that.
That is correct. I just wanted to point out that you think that, that does not, so it means that you would be allowed under zoning to have another dwelling unit in play.
No, I'm saying if, if some of these short-term, these are condos, some of these.
Right, I agree.
The investor, the investor owned in particular are condos, okay? And I just think that there's a consensus amongst the public, in particular, that if these short-term rentals are shut down based on an ordinance that has restrictions, there's going to be an issue that's alleviated and I'm just suggesting that that issue is not going to be alleviated and it may actually become exasperated because if somebody's there three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, they're going to entertain and have company and they're gonna live there. So I just wanted to say in the forefront that this parking issue could become worse without the short-term rentals as opposed to, because we have lots of rental units with absolutely no parking and they're on the streets all the time and that would, those numbers would go up.
I, I understand exactly the way you're making it. I think it would have been the same time, I think there's various perspectives as to where that spectrum falls and how many cars, you know. And I, I recognize that some families want to have cars and some families don't have a whole car. So I, I understand what you're making.
While I stand here, the point, um, perhaps that this board might want to consider is if you do move forward and a property is eligible to be a short-term rental because it has parking spaces, you may want to suggest that licensing require that those spaces be made available to the renters, not just that they have them. Otherwise, those spaces could continue to be occupied by the residents' cars, not solving the issue. So you might consider that in any recommendation you make.
Before, before we get into the, the ordinance. Let's just jump in and I just want to go section by section. So on the first page of the ordinance, the first section is the section of the list of allowable uses. Anybody have any uh, comments or questions about that that they'd like to consider as part of our recommendation? Uh, next one I think is probably very important, the table of uses. This, uh, the, uh, whether a use is permitted, allowed by special permit, not permitted uh, for each of the zoning districts in the city and each of the three types that are being proposed. And there, all of this, all, already got the issue of not permitted in the conservation and the W M D and, and new. Anybody, let's just talk about owner-occupied first of all. The proposal in this ordinance is to allow them in all of the residential districts and business districts, essentially as a right, just a certificate from the zoning industry rather than a special permit. And as has been discussed until now several times, uh, that does not provide a method within zoning for, you know, whatever. How do you feel about this, this proposal? And do you think this is appropriate, appropriate approach for owner-occupied, short-term rental unit? And for the time being, let's just say we're gonna talk about the hundred and twenty days later. So is it just, is just this concept of owner-occupied short-term?
I, I think in R one, R two, and, and I would say even R three, uh, I, I, I really think that modern and, and neighborhood input is, is, should be fundamental to the approval of us. Feel less strongly about in some of the other districts, but those, those are the most sensitive, densely populated neighborhoods where, where, you know, you really need to be very careful about the approval of us. So I think in those three um, classifications, R one, R two, and R three, I, I think we need to allow.
So you're talking special permit.
I don't agree. I think that it should be handled um, as the property is, is, is being operated and if there's occurrences, then that, then those occurrences are reported and handled. Again, I, I know that they're different, but in the same respect, if I own a long-term rental, I'm not gonna ask my neighborhood input on whether or not I should be able to rent that or to whom I'm renting it to. So I think it should be handled as the property exists so that the well-performing properties can be well-received and those that are not performing well, heard complaints by neighbors can be addressed and then their license could be revoked, essentially.
I agree with Heather. I think that um, creating a cumulative process on the front end is gonna be difficult for whatever the special permit authority is. I think that if there are problems, then complain the end, but look again and, you know, penalties, there are. You know, after a certain number of complaints, they, the license is revoked and maybe maybe three years from coming back for one, I think that's, of course, I think that, that's, that's.
Okay, I would just add that I also think that, um, if it is a problem, I think that a license could be removed permanently and then maybe re-engage on transfer ownership or something like that. I'm all for like a three strikes, you're out type of thing. Because I do, I do see these in the neighborhoods and I understand the neighbor's issue. So if there's an issue, I do agree that the neighbors could say enough is enough and that person is no longer eligible.
That's, that's all I was gonna say. Just I, I agree with, uh, that, that, that. It should come into the enforcement and license department.
What ideas? Long from there. Um, what about investor short-term rentals? Current proposal is to uh, allow these only in the R three and business districts and only by a special. Basically, no, uh, no investor units in the R one or R two and none of these are gonna, as I said, right? You know, on the fire, special. Comments?
So I, I, but I would uh, allow them by special permit for existing S T Rs uh, in the R one and R two. And I think we need to deal with special permit.
Yes.
Criteria. And I agree with that, that existing should be allowed. And then I think that some of those would self-correct and get knocked out with strict processes and regulations.
My train of thought, supporting.
I, I agree with it as, as presented here. Continue to think that in, in the densest neighborhoods, uh, it's good fact.
Each people with a lot of things.
Um, I, I don't think that they should be allowed, I, I don't think we should have units in, in dense residences or neighborhoods that, that don't have owners. So I think, I think this, this is okay as if.
What's, um, just this use, investor short-term rentals. I noticed that the, that breakfasts, it's a right, the B two and B three districts, I mean, they're more pervasive than the investor short-term rentals, but I guess a bit better practices. Um, and then the final thing is the Plum Island short-term, so units allowed in the R three district, Plum Island overly district um, will be allowed in, without a special permit.
I'm, I'm actually surprised that it got this far in, in that way. I, and, and it was, it was actually feedback this evening that made this more through that it's just been, okay, let it go, let it go, and be around zone. I'm just, I'm very surprised that it made it this far in that way. Um, because I understand it's been a vacation area, you know, historically, I understand the nature of Plum Island. But I don't agree that it should be its own zone, its own zoning. I do think it should be incorporated. Maybe not as strictly, maybe with some caveats, but I, it does surprise me that it's gone this far into the ordinance proposals.
That's great, Richard. Sorry, just, just for clarification, I understand that, you know, maybe some of your concern. Uh, just keep in mind, I know Jennifer was, this, but, uh, one of this particular reason because of the industry there. There's an argument to be made that by trying now to restrict some of those, they might already be grandfathered because of the use or the use of the going on there. So not recognizing that, the zoning may be problematic for the purposes of enforcement going forward. I don't know what Jennifer wanted to say there, okay. But just, that's something to keep in mind with respect to why that is listed as P here and why it might be carved out a little differently than the rest of the city, the neighborhood.
I think the point is.
The life are carved off specifically for seasonal housing, so.
The point, the point being that those, that as a seasonal housing, short-term rentals, I think that happened before zoning.
Correct.
And so that's, that's, that's different than perhaps what happened. Be harder to demonstrate that properties would be used for short-term, you know, before zoning.
Right, and the possibility of saying right now, we're gonna make a place, we're gonna make a more, maybe problematic in terms of having to, maybe, maybe, potentially many providers out there, but they really need to have a permit for these now, or sorry, having the right to have that operation. So you can certainly get a divided rate, but it's, it's like that, but it's one thing to keep in mind, I guess, in respect of all that.
Richard, I keep trying to look over my shoulder to see if you have any response.
Now, I mean, obviously I'm li- listening intently, but I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, then. So on the, on the second page of the ordinance, we get into the footnotes of the, um, of the use table. And the first footnote has to do with the zoning board being the special permit granting authority for those uses that are subject to special permits. And says that the special permits, perhaps automatically after three years, a person of the applicant are not transferable, do not move away. I don't think there's any question of that. That's, that's pretty clear. Uh, the next footnote.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Okay, next footnote has to do with those that are um, the application for review by the zoning industry, the process of making the. The application for review by the zoning administrator, the process of making the, whether the zoning administrator makes a determination that no zoning relief is required, that would be a P use. And, and I guess I have a question and. Andy, Jennifer, uh, could address this. There is a statement in the beginning and at the end of this third line saying by definition, all S T R U is terminated after three years. And that by definition confuses me because I couldn't find anywhere else, and maybe I missed it, anywhere else in the ordinance. Limited the, as I write, uh, the P short-term rental to three years. Is, is, has, has that been discussed by staff?
I'm not aware of any place we had that.
I am not aware of anywhere else where we, we say that that use is limited to three years, whether I believe the sponsors intended was. Was to say that everyone needs to be reevaluated every three years to confirm compliance. So a by right S T R U needs to come in every three years to sort of. Measure up, if you will.
I guess my, my, my sense is that these are the types of things that don't really belong in footnotes. They should be in the text of an ordinance and somebody should say, someplace in the ordinance you should say exactly what you said, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance.
I think it may have been an effort to keep it as brief as possible.
I don't think that's a.
Might be a, might be a comment you make, yes.
I mean, it is, that's, that's something that, that's, I've gone back and forth in this ordinance and tried to figure out. Where it said that.
Why do you think it suggests that these different pieces of this may be in different places, standing here, obviously, or down in an end or lettering it in a, a footnote at that table.
Well, not only, not only in different places, but just, it seems to be referring to something else because it says by definition, it terminates after three years. So that seems to indicate that there's somewhere else in the ordinance where it says that.
No, I, I'm sorry, I think it's, it's meant that right here in this, in this, per this sentence. Right, and so maybe, maybe, maybe you could rephrase to say, you know. As opposed to say by definition, just saying all short-term rented, this is terminated after three years unless they proceed a, you know, a confirmation, which is the intent that the government says to make sure that they're checking in for. Where it doesn't change.
And the, I mean, the, the footnote above, okay, says that all S T R U special permits shall last on that. But yeah.
There's nothing about the P. So, and it, and this may actually have done the result of completing different things together and not. I think that needs, that, that needs to be. So, so then. This actually goes much further than what happened. So it says that anytime that an owner applies for any. Three-year period starts over. You have to, you have to reapply if you, you do something, a property that requires a weapons permit or.
It has to be reconfirmed by the zoning administrator. Essentially, it may not, it may be the, the application of all preservation commission. This might work, you know, your research area may have that with it or trigger anything different, but. That, that one, I think, is maybe more questionable than maybe perhaps the others, but I, I think that was the intent of the special parts of parent's purposes. Some of it is supposed to make sure that someone wasn't. You know, either applying for that or that the overall baggage could say uses involved in the property might, this is maybe for the pressure, but whether or not the combination of uses on a property might change, whether that's what you elaborate, that's another sort of way of looking at it. This doesn't necessarily address all those situations.
I guess, I guess what's unclear to me is. Whether. And, and this may be a matter of how staff interprets it. But I don't think the actual plain writing of this sentence says that. It makes it clear whether or not you have to apply for a new special permit. If you needed a special permit, you, whether you need to apply for a new special permit, once you apply for a given, you know, weapons. It's, it's very vague. You have to kind of.
But if, so if it's a special permit and it's in K above, right, so that one expires after three years.
Right, but, but then, but if, if after the first year, you want to put up a bench that requires you to have weapons. Then, then you go back for a new special permit. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not really clear.
And again, Jennifer may want to, like, in terms of, I would read that as a confirmation from the zoning administrator rather than the need to apply again to the board. If that's your question.
That's, that's actually my question.
That's how I would observe it.
Yeah, that's what Texas, maybe, I guess maybe this whole footnote needs to be much more clearly written. It's, it's not.
I concur with, with Andy's interpretation and is consistent with what my personal interpretation might be. Uh, I do think it could be made more clear. So that someone perhaps coming into the role after myself, who didn't sit through all these hearings for years, might be, uh, it might be more easily interpreted. So I would support clarifying that. Uh, there are a few items in that as well, but. One might argue, don't need to be there, like a content review probably does not change the nature of. The ability to operate a short-term rental. But all these others, under, the zoning administrator would be reviewing building permit applications whenever they come in. So that would be something that that person in that capacity would review regardless of whether the language is actually in here or not. It's sort of a belts and suspenders section.
What happens is if you review anything here, any of these items here, that becomes a new appealable decision, decision to the zoning.
If, if they were to apply for something that rendered the short-term rental not to be available because of what they're proposing. They would get denied for the building permit, for whatever they were proposing.
I guess what I'm, I'm looking at the other way. So if you were to go through that process and review and review and say, this is okay. Then a butter could appeal that.
Yes, that would be an appealable ruling, yes.
Uh, does anybody have any other comments about that? And then I, that basically says. Okay, moving into section A G. We have a purposes section. Uh, any comments on the, on the purposes section? Definitions. Definitions of certified potluck plan, short-term rental unit. Short-term rental unit is used for fewer than thirty consecutive days and more than fourteen days per year. So if somebody, if somebody does seven weekends of short-term rental, this counts as short-term rental.
Sorry, I wish my, my, my handwriting.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so. It's saying that if somebody were to rent out their residence for, let's say that, seven consecutive weekends, Friday and Saturday night. There's nothing required.
Correct.
And therefore, there's no regulations on that property either.
It's not determined to be, it's not called a short-term rental. It's just something we are somehow allowing. It's the way, that's the way the proposal is written.
I think that it's like. Can of worms, because that's basically July and August. Every weekend in a neighborhood and the neighbors can't, I mean, of course you can complain, but there's no supporting documentation and there's no. I think that's a slippery one. Being that we're a seasonal community.
Maybe I'll send any comments on, on that definition.
I agree as well.
Just a question. I'm not quick, quick enough to Google it. Um, I recall that being a state.
I think that we may have, um, again, in the attempt to keep this brief, lost something in translation. There is a state law that says that you can't charge, you don't charge room tax for fourteen days or less. I don't think that there's a state law that says you can't consider it a short-term rental for fourteen days or less. So zoning might still consider that a short-term rental and regulate it and require a license, but we couldn't charge room tax. Two different things. I would be concerned as zoning administrator. About that because without having some sort of regulation, it would be almost impossible to track the number of days someone had rented. So again, I, I do think that's a point that should be more closely considered and. Would support your considering, recommending, looking at that more closely.
Say that again. I'm not really, wasn't really clear on what your thought is there.
I don't, I don't think that the zoning has to allow fourteen days as exempted from being considered a short-term rental. The state law says you don't charge room tax.
But what was your point about tracking?
I don't know how we would. Uh, if you don't regulate them and you don't consider them short-term rentals and you don't require them to license for fewer than fourteen days. How do we know how many days they are renting?
I was, I was, I wasn't concerned. I was wondering whether you were saying that the tax revenue would help you, but it doesn't.
No, 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 I, okay, no, I just think that the, the, the state law is separate from what you're considering here.
I, I would just add then, I think Heather, I think I pointed this out earlier, but there is unfortunately, there's a disconnect between the state and the tax side, which we agree. Versus the local, we can't unfortunately get all the information that you are, it would be helpful to us in. Dealing with tracking that. Registrations and so forth. That becomes a part of the rest because we're out of, get, gather information that you are, and the mind, that's a not concern. This is our major rented. Confirm here based on your, if they don't know, I mean, it's, it's hard for us to. But there's still track of it coming in.
I don't know the answer to this, but I'm just thinking about this. In order for any property to be on the platforms, there has to be a state certificate issued, I believe.
Uh, I believe that's the way it's supposed to be, but I think that might be the major platforms. I'm not sure how the, the, the platform is, is compliant with that, but I'm changing it to the larger platform.
So, and I'm just kind of like, by time thinking about this, so. Uh, one way to tackle this fourteen days. So anyone who has a state license should by default just be considered a short-term rental unit. Regardless of the number, like if you're getting a state license to operate as a short-term rental unit, whether you're doing, you know, even to get on those platforms for fourteen days. If I'm right, you'd have to get this state certificate. So my point is, if we didn't have that in there, the idea is anybody with a certain state certificate is now a short-term rental and then just has to be within the ordinance. Am I saying that clearly? Because you can't track, she's right, like you can't tell the difference between fourteen and thirty-six days over the course of a year unless you literally have somebody. Mon, like, it's, it's, it'd be very, very difficult. So do not have that in there and just say, if you have a state certificate to be a short-term rental unit, you're a short-term rental unit. We can't traffic your thirteen days or eighteen days, so we're just gonna not have that small clause perhaps.
Well, yeah, well, I, I understand, I guess apart, I, it's something, there's a couple of pieces maybe that you wrote this, but. Part of this, I guess, is that the, um, local community gets to establish what wants to define certain uses as, for instance, that the. Some categories of, that's a short-term, like, yeah, I mean, there is some local discretion to. Define what short-term rental is and allows us to go with that. So, um, they go beyond what, you know, the state is or, or, or they're around the future.
I just think that this is a lot of room for problems.
So you're, you're concerned, you're, you're, you're saying fourteen day is a problem if we just.
Because it's really seven weekends, and that could be seven weekends every summer. That could be a problem in a neighborhood. And it would eliminate the neighbors' opportunities to, I mean, they could file complaints and the police can come, but I'm just saying in terms of like, it just is too gray.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other city ordinances will come into play in a sense of.
They would, but I just, I don't know.
If I could just, um, if, if we said. If we said. Fourteen days is still a short-term, that, but. What, what is the tax? Situation? I mean, is it up to the ordinance then to say?
I.
Fourteen days, so I don't.
I don't want to speak beyond my knowledge on this, but I, I do believe it's something that we should ask for clarification on. I, I, just because one cannot take in state tax. You know, I, I think, I think Heather is pointing out a whole that would allow more flexibility perhaps than intended. And I think it may be a carryover of some language, um, when we had a longer ordinance that. Does not necessarily need to, to be retained. So I think you could at least ask the city council to consider. Looking at that.
I, I would, I would suggest that too, maybe one is confirming, you know, on that, but also I guess maybe speaking as a language, speaking to as a policy, whether you think, or what you think that policy should be. Regardless of any little detail.
Right.
Think that policy should be more, more, more respectful in regards.
In regards to tax though, I just have a question. These platforms charge the tax and then pay the state the percentage of the tax, right? Like, they're, so they're not going to monitor the number of days. So even those fourteen days, they're still paying state tax on their rental if they're going through a platform.
And we're, again, I think we, we would have to be going on base, based on, you know, well, we understand that some of the major platforms are working out, you know, a system will hire, fly up the state, but I can't speak to how well that is being done. That's where you're getting ideas, how well or.
That's good. Okay, um. Operator, operators, agents, primary residents. That was another place where, uh, it was some discussion before, which is the operator. The operator who is the owner. The owner or the owners. Are authorized. Has to live in the house for, in the unit for a hundred eighty-three days a year. If we have half the year in order for it to qualify as a, as a primary residence. I guess I don't know whether that's a standard. Other, other laws and why that.
I think it's common because it's more than half the year.
Primary.
I think that's part of it, yeah. Really, really predominant.
It's not predominant, it's just, just over half. Okay, there's no comment. And then there's the definition of residential unit. Uh, and then basically the definition of residential here, uh, limits it to. Units, dwelling units in a single-family, two-family, multi-family or mixed-use structure. And I can't remember whether residential unit is defined anywhere else in the zoning ordinance.
I don't think there's another definition of the generic, I'll check right out. I don't think there is a, a general definition of residential unit.
Okay, moving on to requirements and restrictions, next table. Okay, so here. I guess there's probably a lot of discussion that could be had about this table. In terms of the. Do they want to go by columns or by rows? Take it whichever way, C makes no sense. Let's go by columns. I'll do it that way. So the first column is whether, uh, is the owner's, operator's primary residence or not. That's basically self-defined because owner occupied is the owner's residence. That's basically self-defined because owner occupied is the owner's residence. Investor owners are not, to my own, there's no restriction. So basically for the owner-occupied unit, the owner has to live there half the year for the other units. Operator presence when guests are present. So this is where we get to the hundred twenty days. Guess we should probably discuss that right now where, if we have a consensus of where we're going with that.
I think the hundred twenty days should apply to what was previously called a home share unit. And for any other unit type where the owner could be present when the rental is staying in place, there should be an obligation that the owner or that's indicated representative be present. That's, that's the way the previous amendment provided. So I can argue about a hundred and twenty days whether that's the right time or not. But I think fundamentally it's to apply only to that's, that's a single-family house.
And once, just to make the, just again for consideration, I don't know whether to turn it one way or this, but the this is like necessarily suggesting a stance for saying this, but the question of whether it's a hundred and twenty days consecutive or whether there's any sort of break in there, which the operators is coming back and checking in versus longer extended period of time. No, I'm thinking of a hundred and twenty days when they're gone, but you have turnover, a short-term rent unit in that period, is that?
I agree. So I think that's completely different. I think that if somebody's gone for a few weeks here and a few weeks there, but we are, and adds up to a hundred and twenty days. They're back in the property, their eyes and ears, they're in touch with their neighbors. I agree. Yeah, they should be, in other words, I don't think that a snowbird should be able to go away for a hundred and twenty second consecutive days and have short-term rentals cycling through their home without them revisiting their own home. I can agree with that. You know, maybe you go away for three weeks, you're back for a spell, you go away again, you might go away in summer. It's a hundred and twenty days. I'm not saying I'm for that number, but I can see that more clarification in that it's over the course of a year and not intended to be a one-time stretch for each year.
I, I think, I mean, I would assume that somebody, you know, it's gone for three months, they're, they've got a property manager or somebody. I would require someone to specifically come back from Florida to check on their house. I would think that, you know, the licensing should be something that's available. But exactly.
A twenty-four percent contact, so it's.
Yeah.
I guess that's.
Right. But I agree with that, that point. I just, I wasn't trying to raise it, or flex it, sorry enough, you know, certain policy questions here. Or just the question that if the cosmic inversion nature of this is of particular concern, particularly in residential districts, right? You know, does the constant turnover, you know, for a certain period of time? You know, versus any kind of check-in or, you know, or bring you back to the baseline of what that district is, which is a residential district. Is that a finisher? You know, again, there's, I mean, one of these things, you have a range of different perspective policies. How to make it different. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that the that it bleeds over into the investor category of, if you have, if you have a dwelling being rented every week for six months. Even for three months.
Just, I'm just trying to, but that's the problem with the fact that they combined those different categories into this one category. It's a gray, how to apply each, each instance, whether it's an owner-adjacent and so forth. And that's sort of what we're grappling with here because certain things apply to one but not to others. A little hard to, to get a general statement out of it, applying to this one category, the way they redefined this, this group.
So I don't really have a problem with any of this, except that I would make it no presence requirement for up to ninety days. Because it'd be present for any access.
Not sure that we have a any kind of consensus. Do you have anything you want to say about that?
No, I, I, I just refer back to the previous amendments and yeah, I think it was always an intention that where an owner could be present, they or a designated representative would be present when, when the unit was being rented. And, and the only time that this hundred and twenty, nineteen came up was in the case of, of single-family house where the owner was leaving. And, and that was put in as some kind of limitation for how much of the year that owner could actually be absent and, and rent the house. That was the mechanism for controlling. So I, I think, I think this implies you're related to that. That's historically how this, this has been looked at in all the other things. It's important to reinforce that we're an owner can be present when they're represented if they need. So I don't know if you do a footnote on this and say the hundred and twenty days only applies to that's independent houses that would be vacated or determined. I don't know, I won't say that, but, but I, I think it really needs to be focused on that.
Can I, I, I'd just like to maybe speak to what I, as zoning administrator, read this to say right now. People have spoken to, can someone, I bet someone could rent their single-family house out as a short-term rental if they were living there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, as long as they stayed in the unit while they rented it out. That's what this says right now. They can go away for a hundred and twenty days a year, four months of the year continuously, under this provision as it is right now. So unless the board wants to make a recommendation to reduce that either into smaller segments of thirty days at a time or a ninety-day period is, as I think Beth was suggesting. The, the house can still be rented, whether it's a one-family or, you know, two-family, it can still be rented three hundred and sixty-five days of the year if an owner is present. There's no, we're not limiting them from doing that. I don't think a footnote is further required. But I, so yes, it combines them, but I, I think the only question that you're all grappling with is is the hundred and twenty days too long to keep the, keep the reins in on that sort of more investor-like component?
Well, I think it's, it's not just the single-family, because it also applies to another unit of the same lot as the owner's prime, primary residence. So if you had a duplex, or if you had a secondary unit or a lot like that, it goes beyond just, I mean, I had, that, that was what I, how I was interpreting. Labs. We're talking, it's the same as the, what was previously called an owner-adjacent.
The, the ordinance in its simplified version does not contemplate those.
Well, it does. It says, it says that defines an owner-occupied unit as including another unit of the same lot as the owner's principal residence.
Sorry, I, I guess I was thinking of multi-family. Sorry.
It's, it's just, it's, I think it's that combination of things.
Yeah, I, I just, I look at, in the heading for this, it's operator presence when guests present. And in this section, it says no presence requirement for up to a hundred and twenty days of the short term for, for any of those owner-occupied. A hundred and twenty days is, is, that's a lot of content. And, you know, if, if the owner could be present because it's an owner-adjacent or it's a only limited share or, you know, all of the other types. I, we, we have always, I thought, stressed the idea that the owner needed to be present to provide oversight. A hundred and twenty days back to Heather's point. Now that's, that's an entire summer, that's, that's an entire year of weekends, that's, that's no presence from the owner or, you know, a significant block of time, however, how you divide that up during the year. And I think that should really only apply to a situation where the owner is vacating the house and, you know, is going somewhere else and they're renting out the entire house. That's, that's how this was written.
So are you concerned with the situ, the number of days for the situation where the owner is not present? Or you think if you have two, say you have a two-family and you live in one and you're using the other for short-term. That there should be some requirement because you're able to be there?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how I remember the previous versions being written, that a limited share and an owner-adjacent unit where an owner could potentially be present. And they or representatives should be present to provide oversight. They're only not present when they're renting out their entire house. And in that case, there's a time limit, you know, amount of days per year where you could actually do that. That was the control on that. So, you know, the hundred and twenty days, I, I don't necessarily feel strongly in one way or another about that's the right number or not. But I think it really only should apply to a certain. And we should have a patient here that, you know, when the owner and the, they need to be present.
I was just going to comment, if it, if it's an owner-adjacent unit and they're renting, since they're limited to having only one short-term rental, it's not like they're going to go away and rent their house as well as having their owner-adjacent unit rented. So it, it seems to me it's sort of the same situation, whether it's a single-family house or an owner-adjacent. You know, the question is whether we allow them to be away for a certain number of days.
What I'm saying is if, if you have a two-family house and it's owner-occupied, the owner lives in one unit and they're renting out the other unit, that's a short-term. The owner has the opportunity to be present when that second unit is being rented. And for the previous versions of the amendment, they were required to be present. If I have a limited share rented for the previous definition, I'm renting out a portion of my house while I'm still there. I should still be there when I'm, when I'm renting. So in those, those two situations, the previous amendments where that somebody provide oversight while that was happening. But that's not possible when you're renting out your entire house and you're leaving. So that's where this, like, a hundred and twenty days.
Right. And I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying the situation is really the same. If, if they were renting half of, the other half of, you know, their, their two-family house, they could end up going away in a certain amount of time and still rent the other half of the house as a short-term rental. It's sort of the same effect as a, a single-family person not being there. You know, the question, you're saying they could be present, but they may not be. And what we're saying here is we're allowing them not to be present for up to a hundred and twenty days.
If you go back and look at the previous, it was, it was pretty clear. You know, the, the owner occupancy
Right.
had a hundred and eighty-three days.
Right, but that's not in front of us right now.
I know, but, but I'm saying, you know, the spirit of that should be incorporated.
Just, I think that the question is how many days are we comfortable with someone renting when they're not there? Per year. And then we go from there. Because that's the, you know, the extreme situation that's everybody is concerned about, spending the time that somebody wouldn't be there to provide oversight. But if we're, I don't think that there's any reason why someone with two families should have to be there versus a single family. We're just deciding how long we're comfortable. I mean, somebody that you could say in a single family, right, a person could be there and just rent the room out. But we're not required, right? It's really like, how long are we comfortable with somebody not being there?
I'd like to add that there's another component to this, which is which we can imagine, although I specifically don't think we should be imagining what the licensing should do here, right? Because I wouldn't be keen to have no presence requirement for any of these categories if the operator is completely unreachable. So I gotta imagine that in the licensing, there's going to be something about the, the operator being reachable, being known. Maybe be proximate or nearby or, you know, phone call away basically. But that's not in here, that's not part of zoning. So, you know, no presence requirement to me is particularly offensive for the investors. Because we have, if I heard anything from the public, it's that there has to be a way to reach these people and there is a problem. So this just gets to me and I think it's, maybe we're saying the obvious here, like at least two-thirds of the topics we've hit. We've said if licensing does blank, then this works. There's so much missing without the licensing.
I'd like to add that perhaps the language says no presence required for up to a hundred and twenty days per calendar year, however, in increments of to have the operator actually get eyes and ears back on the property intermittently. You know, maybe it's in thirty-day increments so that they could have short-term rentals for thirty days and then they have to come back two weeks or or what have you. But it's supposed to allow this to become a four-month stretch.
I just fundamentally don't understand how you can say, on the one hand, we're not going to allow investment units in, in certain neighborhoods. And then say, but if you're an owner occupant, you can leave for a hundred and twenty days out of the year and still rent there. And, and those two things are, are kind of diametric. I, I just, I, I think I think that's not what we have been talking about historically. And I think it's very contrary to the idea that investor units would not be allowed in certain residential districts. So I, I just, I can't see why you would apply a hundred and twenty days to all.
I think, I think a component of that was that as an investor unit, they're, they're, they're better there and they would have less interest in the neighborhood and, and presumably the maintenance of the house up to the standard of someone who is occupying the house at least some of the time. And, and what we're saying owner occupies it's at least half of the year. I think that was the contrast. So that, that was why I noticed the difference.
But it's about oversight. And, and if you're saying a hundred and twenty days out of the year, I don't have to provide oversight for, for the rental. That's, that's all summer. That's every weekend. If you're renting two, two nights out of the weekend, that's, that's.
Only if you're, if you're coming back during the week. It's, it's different though, because what we're saying is if you're renting every weekend, you have to come back to, and live in the house for the five days in between.
You're not there when the rental is happening.
Right, right.
You're not providing the oversight, should to protect the neighborhood, you know, while the rental is happening.
Right, but the oversight, I think, you know, should perhaps come with their licensing side. And it's like, is there an operator or a contact?
Right, so I think if, if this permit were granted, you could have that, you have a secondary phone number, you have a secondary contact who is responsible. I do think, I see how it's similar to investors, but I also see from just a real personal human experience that there's many people who may not have opportunities to travel or, or go to a warmer climate for a few months. This would absolutely grant that. You know, we, we talk. You know, we we talk a lot about people who just they just can't afford things as taxes go up in the city and and other costs go up. And I do see this as an opportunity for some people to just enjoy parts of their lives. But I also. Do not like that it would be consecutive without eyes and ears, so I think that there's ways to handle that. Um be it a second contact or somebody who registered on a special permit as being responsible. That could be a a caveat to solving issues.
But I think a lot of that, I think that goes to license.
I agree.
And there, you know, a a lot of other towns, there needs to be a twenty four hour, someone available twenty four hours that can be there within an hour. Like, I think that's completely reasonable. I think that. You know, starts to deal with the issue, I think. You know, this presence requirement, I take mean, do you need to actually be physically present? Which I think is a lot different than saying that it's simple. And I I I wouldn't require someone to come back and check periodically, as long as there is somebody overseeing. Like, I'm not, I wouldn't think that somebody that. Goes winters down in Florida needs to come back, I don't even have high force that, you know, I'm gonna go. Talk to Jennifer and say, hey, I'm reporting.
That contact could.
Right, perhaps, or if there's an issue, correct.
Okay. So, next column, maximum. And I'm gonna suggest that we, after we finish this column, we wrap up. Losing brain cells and and post problem. So, let's just try and get through this this table and we'll pick it up at our next, unless people feel really energized to keep going. So you can give me some.
Okay, okay.
I'm trying to chime in on this. Yeah.
I got, obviously, I remember to chime in here, but I just, by initial, I think it was definitely you raised this earlier, but. The question about how many guests versus bedrooms, maybe clarifying between maximum occupancy, I think is a bad issue. By clarifying between maximum occupancy and what you have to do with bedrooms, really we're not talking about. You know, a situation which you have six, you know, one bedroom, but rather maybe it's two with a maximum of two per bedroom, something like that, right? That's as a clarification of the maximum occupancy. So.
I think the the point that I was. What I made a few days ago was that. The way this is this works, somebody could say, I've got one bedroom. And I've got two people sleeping in the living room, two people sleeping in the den.
Exactly.
And I've, but I've, so I met the maximum occupancy requirement, I don't provide any parking spaces. I only want that, so I think that's a um a good point, it's the same maximum two people.
One bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, two.
You could, is that, you feel more comfortable with that than with the sense of two people, maximum two people per bedroom?
I just think the more is a very simple black and white. And I'll say the same thing, Rick, you know, it's about about parking. You know, we should, we should. Do the spreadsheet that that you and I talked about six months ago, that that basically says, here's your existing condition, grandfathered or not. Here's the requirement, here's how many parking spaces. And I think the more you rely on a table. Rather than a narrative to to describe that, I I think it becomes much clearer and much easier for.
One quick comment and I. I'm not sure what this what the solution is, but as you were saying, between, say, two per. Twenty per bedroom and then maximum of three bedrooms or in place of Plum Island, maximum of six bedrooms, because I can envision. Um places Plum Island may have a bedroom with two bunk beds in it. But then rent out, you know, for having kids and so forth, so I mean, depending how you word that, that would that would limit some of those. Just wanted to raise that, like, it could be, and I don't know how you would uh regulate that or enforce that, so.
Understood, I mean, to be frank, there's a lot of fine great details that both the parts both on this one that is fact. This is one part of the reason why it's been raised, but much staffing or resources, so to speak, are with monitoring, you know, for the purposes. Of course, we're going to have a discussion about the follow through on enforcement, one thing for Jennifer, others, some of the, some of the, but it's all for this. You know, maybe beyond what the office here, you know, it's heavily. Um but I think. Here, you know, anything you can clarify.
If I have four bedrooms, can I? Have. An master and I just could say I'm just renting out three of the bedrooms and still have an act on six people or?
Apparently. That's how I interpret this. Think about that. For how do you find that, I guess one of the, one of the struggles I'm having is to what extent do we. They they got recommendations on this ordinance, which is what we do. And to what extent do we want something new, I mean, I don't think we're we're called, we're not really called on what's new. But we could do one, for example, and provide a, for example, substitute table. But I don't wanna get into rewriting the entire ordinance, so. You know, we're. We can point out things that we think are problematic and try to try to fix it in a limited way. In fact, we were at the last. Okay, parking requirements. So. I have a problem. With the words parking variance is strictly open. I don't think you can do that. I think that anything in zoning can be varied. You know, you'd have to rely on the license, the licensing entity to say, doesn't, you know, you don't think about that.
Uh I do think that under the, I think maybe what you're getting at is under forty eight, this zoning act. And the legislature has provided this on more appeals, the ability to provide marriage, many provisions zoning. What you're getting at here, the the already proposed here, where the council will be adopting. A direct to the sort of appeals, if you drive out the authority in this limited area. Um similar to the the they have, but on use variances.
Use variances is specifically.
Specifically referenced, claimed in the zoning act. Whereas every other type of danger is not specifically referenced, it's something that can be included, alright? So, um yeah, I think generically, certainly, probably counsel on that issue, but I I think. You maybe have a hard time making a case in court, that the zoning law doesn't have the authority statute to look at it as a variance.
And I and I guess, I guess what I'm what I'm. Highlighting here is that this column, so. Back up and say, it's not that I don't trust this all. But but this column seems to give more reassurance to residents. That may be absolutely justified, because. It's possible to, uh somebody, the the property owner could come and say, I have a hardship and I wanna be able to do this, but I don't have the required expenses.
I I'm sorry, just to add, I know, while I do echo that interpretation, maybe your power of state statute applies here. I do think, and I don't think we have our zone of appeals nowhere today, but I do think that would maybe be harder for the board to actually. Uh this, depending on the circumstances, to consider hardship to be a claim, which would be prerequisite for variance. Um and given any explicit language the board has, the council may put there as actual weight, that I think would be considered by the board before granting any. That nature, even though they could have legal authority to somebody, if there's one of those pictures, then the board may be still inclined based on, you know, guidance from the council. Recognize the sensitivity to granting that.
Yes, yeah. Other comments on this? I would expect you to.
I would, I would go back again and printed this spreadsheet that you and I talked about this positive. You know, which basically just kind of describes existing conditions, grandfathered or not, and and what the additional requirements. I I would say on this, that back back to my earlier comments about this. Being the the framework for regulating the number of. Of units. That that are allowed. If if we. Were to maintain this language and say if you offer one bedroom, zero additional spaces are required. You could imagine that, you know, if. If an owner couldn't provide off street parking. Um that they would limit, be limited to only offering one bedroom. And and in doing so, would. Minimize the impact of cars on the street. Because there's only theoretically the car for two people in one bedroom, it's on the street. So so my my concern is that. Anybody who can't provide. The parking. Uh will will want to be considered as a one bedroom unit so that they can qualify as not requiring parking. And uh I don't know how you police that, I I suppose that has to do with with looking at, you know, how it's offered on the website. And, you know, what the license it is and how it's approved. But, you know, there's still a promising factor to that, so on on the one hand, I can see that. You know, saying zero spaces. And and limiting it to one bedroom limits the impact on the street around. The problem, but I I think this may result in a lot of. It's a market that's. Maybe that's actually. So I don't, I. I don't necessarily disagree with what's here. Um I feel much more strongly about the hundred and twenty days. Um but but I I would ask that we consider the the. Table approach to parking, so there's just no question about what is being suggested.
Anybody else, any comments on parking or this? Satisfying? Approach. Okay, maximum days per year, the short term minimum years, all of them say no limit. On on the number of days per year, the only restriction is the number of days that the operator has to be present for. The owner operator has to be present for. Two hundred and forty five days.
Or the investor where it's. Where it's indicated. There was, there was, so that that section applies to the um investor. As it was over those two.
It does, but I don't know.
As required.
As it's just.
And nothing is required.
Nothing's required, yeah, so it should be, it should actually say for investor, no requirement.
Just because it wanted to find that it said it could, an operator could be present.
And maximum number of short term units per operator. One cumulatively for everybody except for Plum Island.
Yeah, is that with the exception of the existing investor units, then?
Well, this ordinance doesn't have any exception.
Right, um I'll, yeah, I prefer to sponsor, but I think, you know, he had noted that, I think, he was looking at it as a policy of a overall basis as opposed to. Evaluating it based on what's out there today and how it's likely affected, I think that's, we've talked before, Jennifer, I've talked about. That that could be one route valid, you know, we put our consideration to have. Um but, you know, whether or not everybody thinks that's something that should be allowed, I think it's looked at as well, but whether or not that should be allowed, and if so. I think that's been a point of debate, you know, for several years now.
I think in our, in our last report, at least some of us have recommended an exemption or a. Grand, wasn't grandfathered.
Amnesty.
Right?
Amnesty.
Amnesty.
Right now, there's not been provisioned into a point, it's suggested, which is a provision to enable the ones that are operating today to continue to operate, even if they don't have these terms, which I think is what we're trying to do.
That was also my question, because I feel like if some of those are problematic, they'll be vetted out through. Exactly, through neighbor complaint and things like that, but I. I agree, and and part of that is from two weeks ago, some of the people who spoke who have. Existing investor units who they claim have only benefits and not any negative aspects, and if that's the case, then. Those would move forward without complaints, and if they were problematic, there would be complaints and then they would shut down.
And there's, there's, they write that over that, that spectrum there, including, starting their starting point of whether or not they're currently legal as a starting point versus being operated. Without necessarily being, you know, legal units today, which is that, from the other perspective, that has been raised for the concern as well.
So if the. If the if the determination was made somehow, that the city policy, existing policy that short term metal is already left. If that's, if that's a valid determination. Then you have a problem with a permanent, I think what we had is an amnesty to bring people into compliance. But it doesn't allow them, it wouldn't allow them to have a free. And by that, I mean, if this, the current zoning or the current proposal. Prohibits investor owned units in R one and R two. Then you couldn't have a provision. That allowed, that made those that existed uncertainly illegal, and those things is. Illegal, because it's not a grandfather provisions, basically you're saying they were illegal and we're giving you. Amnesty classes to come into compliance, but if you don't have any ability to allow investor units in that period. It's not the same thing as we were talking about last time, it's not an amnesty, you can't treat, in zoning, you can't treat identical properties in the same district separately. And so the fact that somebody did something illegally before the zoning was created. And wants to keep doing it after this is created, is not a justification. I think that's, that's a problematic thing, I think that would be subject to challenge.
Can I ask for clarification on illegal and legal? Is there? Does zoning say you report that you are not allowed to rent something for less than thirty one days? Is it, is it clearly written that way?
No, I think what, uh as we're going at here, is that much of the things others want to be in context here, but what is being pointed out is the language. The ordinance, the section that says, if the use is not allowed, the ordinance explicitly is not allowed. And then there's case law, which has pointed out that the short term rentiers are quasi commercial in nature. Um and so that is, that is contributed to that, the argument being here that we have not, the city council has not specifically authorized its use, therefore it's prohibited. And an argument to be made that it's somehow um an extension of the residential use, has been, you know, invalidated by the case law that suggests it's quasi commercial in nature and they're sure. Considered as an outlaw, like, as a quasi commercial.
Yeah, that's that's basic, it's basically that it doesn't say that it's illegal, but because it doesn't say that it's legal, it's it's not allowed, the way the ordinance is written.
So would there, there would be no way, you couldn't say that it's permitted in special permit in R one and R two? But then say only those that were.
I don't think so, I don't think that's possible.
I I'm, well, I'm the perfect answer, I'm not convinced that that particular scenario would be uh not possible legally, uh I think that maybe it's developed. Policy with that, I'm not necessarily convinced that option would be percent. But I think if you raise a fair point, which is that it presumes that question of um lack of conformity. Or the way you're dealing with what is essentially the same operation. with the way you're dealing with what is essentially the same operation.
You look at something.
That was a safe.
Do something like that?
Is that?
I thought, didn't it, I mean, it was a lot, so. But had Salem done something?
Salem, what we were proposing to do, what Salem had done, which was to provide an amnesty period for existing units to come into compliance with the zoning, but they allowed, they specifically allowed those units.
But that was to be, that was to be in full conformance with the ordinance?
Yes.
Versus here where it may not meet the requirements of the ordinance, but it would be, the idea is that it would be allowed even though it doesn't require, it doesn't comply with all the requirements for it to be part of the. Distinction.
Well, I think the distinction was still previous. Last year, September, it was basically September last year, so. Yeah, so I think that we need to look into that. Well. It's my, Jamie, go ahead.
Just a comment, I think there's an ambiguity with the three-year, do you overlay the three-year expiration of permitted series? That becomes more complex. With the grandfather ones or amnesty, the ones framed by amnesty, whatever the right words are, it should be indefinite. It would have some certain term, I would imagine, through the contents of all the other ways that.
Correct, well, you'd have to create, if you didn't want to have to comply with the regulations here, you have to create another set of regulations.
And we're about to wrap up, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Not to open a can of worms up discussion, but just to think about it, because I think one of the biggest technical issues here is the lack of criteria for special permits.
Yes.
And which section will we think about putting that? Maybe just to get some thought to it, I, I, that's one of the things I want to think about the most between now and then. Where, where the criteria for special permits would go, would it go in actually even in the session?
You'd have to create a new, a new subcategory, a new subsection in the section.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'd say, in addition to the criteria for all special permits, such and such, these additional proposed as to where you have, where we need to. Well, unless anybody wants to talk about this right now, I would look for a motion to just continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
So move down. Certainly.
And unfortunately, I need to do the roll call again. Alvin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Richard? Yes. And Rick, yes, so we're continuing this matter to our.
Yes, I finally found my mute button, yeah.
To our next meeting on 17.
I'm sorry, just to, we can check our agenda, but did you, this is the intent to have that.
Pardon?
At the beginning, is the intent?
That's true, at the beginning. Yeah, you only have, we have one item on each end, right?
I think right now, yeah, I just wanted to.
I'm not really sure how complex that is.
I'll come ahead, I don't think it's something that's.
Well, actually, so, so I think maybe just to get that out of the way, let's get that out of the way.
Hi.
Take this.
Sit here.
I know you got it, if I was out, then I probably would have.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you for those who used that inside. We'll see you in two weeks. Yeah, for some of you. Okay, so just a couple of items on the business, CPC representative business on the agenda. Anybody that's seen the light and would like to volunteer for this, which is something that's really going to crop after, next year.
Yeah, it'd be great, we're supposed to have a designated one specifically for the playboys or whatever, by the statute. It's not necessarily completed or urgent per se, but it's not, you're basically, like, I do, just wish you'd help us. Because everyone's not a person like this. Something you would hear, it's permanent or spray, it's like, maybe you could create it, it's going to be a spring energy, and after the rest, after the rest of the years, not much, yeah, there's not. So we, I'm just saying, we'll be on that.
So I would like somebody to volunteer, but we're going to volunteers. Talk to me in between.
Rick and I discuss how long this, I don't know, stay in the.
Keep talking back to everyone. An approval of minutes, I have to apologize, I did not.
It was me.
I should, I could have been, so I would prefer that we defer this to the next. And I actually don't. Updates.
I would just, sorry, I'll just mention briefly, Thursday night, the boards and commissions forum was being added to, I think, our address from sort of a town pool members, members of the patient joint.
I'll be standing there behind the table.
The tables have gone toward city volume and, which might be interesting.
If anyone's a kid, you can come in if you can. Is the boards and commissions were charged for information forms.
Yeah, I forget what they titled, exactly.
The whole auditorium is going to be filled with tables, specific people who come up and talk.
Get information to get volunteers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right. It's still a bit of a usual process, but you're going to have to bear that in mind. The UBS director started this week, so I'll be looking back at him now, I did, so I mentioned I want to get a little bit more discussion going on the infrastructure issues before we get too heavy in the theories, you know, discussion what we're proposing for bill up, because that's going to be also discussion about what are we doing below overall, you know, in other areas of the city or priority students, so just making sure we're looking at the whole picture.
So, so any of that, there's that pot of funds, for grant funds specifically for MTA community stuff?
Yeah, I was planning on sort of back with you on that, and I thought perhaps what I could discuss with only SC or others.
I think we should, we should use as much.
As many resources, yeah, agreed, so I, perhaps you like follow that.
And council?
There, there was a concept they presented to us, back to our 4B project, I have an extra lane in all cities.
Just sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust, the general.
They have in there, that attorney is presenting that, I presume, is updated schematic, what the laws are there, but that one, again, is, is proposed, or essentially proposed right now, not fully proposed as a 4B, and that goes to the whole discussion of, you know, where we are under Seaburger status, whether that project is fundamentally consistent as they're talking about the zoning district. So it's basically a lot of the back end of high street, that was one of the intentions of the high street, overly district was to, you know, sort of allow the areas to some degree. So this brings up that question of, you know, Seaburger status, 4B projects, whether or not it's larva west or extra later in the place.
So this is the same property that we, to the release of covenant being to the.
This, the roadway, you, I knew that the lots off the extra lane, technically speaking, what they're proposing is the back, at the street address, the, the back of a high street lot that's behind those lots, that they would propose the building on, buildings on the reason that one wasn't questioned. There was, they were purchasing that lot, they brought the question, and all the lots on that street apparently had other, or at least in the original subdivision, but it's technically, they're proposing the building of the lot behind it, and that lot would be used for access.
And is, is that the nice street or the language?
It is.
No. That back part of it. And what is the scale of this?
They can talk about 16 units in St. Borisrash or something like that.
Mixed income or, or mixed income or?
No, mixed, I mean, they're not proposing all the report, but I understand is, we're talking about baseline 12%. So spring of next year, when you talk about March of next year, so I, you know, it goes to the usual discussion of do we have a proactive plan? And this is one reasonable way. Or it's one where the other, where the council sets up on things like Brown School, and whether that mobilizes or allows the units permitted, you know, whether I think it comes with any project or any others that, you know, are those things that are permitted, you know, permitted if not constructed, you know, to maintain that status. We also don't have DSC, it's not, still have a little, some census numbers or, or those numbers that they calculate them. So we're unable to do a, to, to, to generate about the number of units that we got to generate to, to stay above that, Seaburger status, but we will circle back with you on information. I think the main point is that, well, we're, we don't typically bill all those units, right? And the Brown School is, they can easily cover units, we have a couple of big lots, but we're dependent in part of the private sector to do certain things, but we probably should be doing these with Seaburger status, 4B status, be doing what we can do to maintain Seaburger status and keep zoning. And then targeting the housing where we think it's appropriate in the right way. That's not to say that, you know, development in one of these, or certain areas like water west is, could be, or could be, that it's just a type of housing that comes permitted. You know, I'm not necessarily, you know, 4B is a way of permitting identity development, because it effectively allows developer target also throws up the start of the window. And that, I don't, I can't support that, or, you know, you know, land of the spectrum, I think is what that was that. So that's, that's a good, right, I would have is that the clock is ticking down, we need to be cognizant of that, for magic, that it requires a little signature and some.
Do you have any sense of the third MCO project?
Uh, group one. They're getting, they're working out a couple of things right now, and they're, we're trying to work out the disumeration of the master team, which is all this information. Yeah, and there, so they're, they're making progress in that. They work over the last area, there's a power core, this is vegetation, we're not, we're not there. So I think they've made the progress that they, it's a little bit, when I spoke, I think yesterday or before, it's, it's a little bit based on the economy right now. He's sort of checking right now, he's hoping that things will kind of, you know, be in the right place, but he does want to roll from three lots away over to the one, the, the, the 661 project, but it's still dependent on where the market is, the numbers, the clients, and, you know, quite at that time. So he's, he's sort of keeping track of it right now, it's hopeful, but he's also saying, like, I can't say the fin of it right now, you know, starting to track it right after. That's what he wants to do, but it's, it's dependent on the providers.
Where are they in the design process right now?
Well, the one one is our. So the one, the root one project, you have to ask about, right, right? Yeah, so that's, that's the one, this one already proved.
Yeah, but have they done contract documents?
Oh, no, sorry, I don't know the details of how they're far there along with that piece of it. I know they've been making progress that piece of, that, I think what he's done is most of the work of the architect, I don't, he doesn't, but I think he's done most of the work there. It's more just a question of when is he actually starting improving, you know, all the processes associated with that, so. I think the design work itself was. No, I think we, we mentioned earlier today, the overnight park restriction of the lots, and just that relates to the, there isn't a formal restriction on overnight parking of the lots in relation to our 26th parkage discussion, short-term rent years, you know, whether it's a version downtown, surface market lots, maybe a little utilized, depends on your perspective of what you're trying to accomplish here, but parking management slash what do you want from the downtown, uses, and how do the lots either satisfy parking demand or displaced, or, you know, all that is, you know, looking at it right now, but there's a, I think, a packet coming forward, this one day is a complication of a amendment to the general city code that would formally put a record restriction of parking in city lots, where it's been sort of unofficial policy to date, that has, you know, depending on perspective, pros and cons, one thought would be on the utilization of that lot, and potentially if there are residential units. Again, putting aside, we're going to discuss the future units versus old units, if you don't allow any parking vehicles are we effectively pushing cars into residential neighborhoods, that's a question to ask. Are we creating an artificial, you know, parking constraint in residential neighborhoods? I think that's where it will have that discussion, I understand, the desire to sort of parking, there's different perspectives on that, but that's one thing I would think at the price of a lot. You know, that's why we have to share a parking question, so.
So when that, when that comes forward, will we go to planning and development or somewhere else? City, other works and services? I don't know.
That's a good point, I don't, I don't, I don't think it would ultimately speaking right now, basically, the council has this base described in, I don't think that they would be saying this on playing developments, but I did a correlation there, and it's the fact that you said two committees were the, the whole capital discussed, but I wouldn't necessarily direct, expect this directly to play development, I would expect.
We have to keep, keep tracking that.
And they haven't closed them by yet, so that's, that's still.
That's for planning development tomorrow night.
Correct.
The other questions? Updates and events?
Just to let you know, May 17th meeting, I'll be Amsterdam for three and a half weeks, so I will not be able to attend.
Great, good for you. So May 17th, and also Heather's not going to be.
Why can't you call?
Because it'll be three o'clock in the morning.
I want to unplug, I want to completely unplug.
Also, what is, what is Don's last?
I'm going to say, and I think the next one will be the very last one.
I thought, I thought you said you got two left.
Yeah, sorry. So you're going to miss the party. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
To adjourn?
House second.
Thank you. I'll do the final roll call, Alvin?
Yes.
Bob? Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Very good, okay, see you in two weeks, whoops, some of you.